Like, everybody's present in accounting form. Everyone was present. And I want to begin with an initial public comment if there's anyone here who would be able to speak before we kick things off. Anyone care to speak? Yes.
I'm sure I can like me.
Uh, fine. It's no like, can you come forward and just...
So, um, I read through this about fifteen times and I'm still trying to parse it all out so I can appreciate the challenge of getting us all to work together. Except for one provision, I don't offer any specific language since you're still working through the language yourself and changes in the staff, so I'm not gonna bother with any of that. The one fairly easy change I would suggest is the section 170-92, which is the opening intent section. I would suggest that we add language that says this is intended to protect and promote the goals of the comp plan specifically, or stated goal of being a scenic county. So maybe you could put in something along the lines of a number seven to protect and promote the goals, policies, and principles of the comp plan, particularly our declaration as a scenic county, or something along those lines. I would say that many jurisdictions rely on tourism or that value their natural scenic resources as part of their comp plan, do choose to strictly limit the proliferation of signs in their communities, given the extent of their signs, especially those that are large or strident and deface the attraction, the scenic value. So I think that might be important to stay up on. Then there are a few things that I think might be worth just bearing in mind as you all continue through this. Number one, probably foremost, I think is the likely expansion of our current signage. Some of the changes you're making are difficult because, as we all know, Reed versus Gilbert takes away our ability to limit the signs based on the message they convey. So we're only left with size, location, duration, and design. So previously, for example, if you, we have under, in our current ordinance, under 170-106H, for example, that you can identify products sold on your farm through a sign. Most farms are not gonna put that up. But now, under your proposed 170-94R, we would allow temporary signs on an ag lot or parcel that has a wayside stand as a way of trying to get to that and allow a farm to do that. But now, because you're allowing it for any message, a farm that wasn't likely to have a sign advertising their product might well be inclined to have signs that limit political, that call out political views or philosophies or images. And under the way you have it proposed now, a temporary sign is, can be up to 200 days as long as you get a exemption from the zoning administrator. So that's, that's close to seven months. So, so you have exemptions also like that for construction sites because we normally have allowed you to put a construction sign up while it's under construction or a parcel that's for sale or leased, you wanna be able to put up a for-sale sign. But now, because we can't have the message on it anymore as part of the regulation, we just say you can have a sign on a lot that's under construction or a sign on a lot that's for rent or lease. But again, it's temporary signs, so it's up to 200 days, and it can have really any message. We can't limit the message on that. So that, those kinds of provisions do have maybe an unintended consequence of really expanding the amount and type of signs that are gonna be on properties in addition to what we currently allow. Temporary signs are another example of that. The current ordinance limits them, the duration, limits their duration based on their message, whether it's an event sign or a political sign, for example, and it limits it to 30 days. One sign for 30 days, except for political signs, 90 days or a few other carve-outs. So what we're doing now to try to capture all of that is making it five signs for up to 200 days. But again, we can't limit the message at all. So signage that might have been very limited to an event or a political thing now can have anything on it and would expand the duration and would expand the number that you can have. So we're likely to have a lot more signs, temporary signs, than we had, or at least there's a potential for that. Hay bale signs is another thing we've added. I have to say, the justification for this escapes me somewhat. It's a pretty substantial carve-out. I'll get to one of the limitations in a minute, but if the assumption is that hay bales are somehow more rural-looking than other signs, I think there is really no surer way to ruin their rural charm than to have 25 of them in a row blaring out messages that could be controversial or divisive or disturbing or have images that are not at all popular images, but we can't limit that. So it's also, 200 days is what we have in here at the moment. So that's, again, close to seven months. And presumably, if you take those hay bales down, you could put up 25 more, you know, in a week. There doesn't appear to be a limitation on that. So fundamentally, I don't, I don't really see the justification for allowing signage on hay bales that's not allowed on a wooden board. I just don't see that distinction. So in any event, if we did it, we ought to limit it more in duration and in size. You have the language that's supposed to limit the signage on it. It's in proposed 170-106, which starts in the version I have at least on line 507. And that language reads, "The total signage per lot or parcel in conservation, agricultural, residential rural, residential and residential village, and mobile home park zoning districts shall not exceed an aggregate of 20 square feet. Nor be more than eight feet in height, nor be located closer than X feet to any property line, et cetera." So it's not clear the way this is written, this may need some tinkering, whether that's, it says, it appears to, intended to apply to this section. I think you mean it to apply to the entire article, the sign ordinance. But I don't, it's not clear what this is intended to address. So it says unless it's, I assume it means unless, what you intend is unless it's somehow specified otherwise in the article. But does that not limit, for example, temporary signs? So that one wouldn't apply to temporary signs, which, under that provision, allow an aggregate of 50 square feet? Or construction signs, which allow an aggregate of 32 square feet? Or ag lands signs, which allow an aggregate of 32 square feet? Same for, for sale signs? And of course, 25 hay bale signs in a row, we're not gonna fit within that 20 square feet. So it's not, it's not exactly clear what this applies to, so that might bear some looking at. It also is not clear what that sentence that says lots or parcels with a solely residential use are not eligible for a sign permit that is otherwise permissible through this section. I just didn't know what that meant. So that's, moving on to billboards. You still prohibit billboards under 170-101E, but you've changed, changed the definition. In your change, you're referencing a section of the Virginia Code.
Sorry, do you clarify?
I'm sorry. Under current 170-101E, we still prohibit, we still prohibit, you're still keeping that provision in prohibiting billboards, at least in the version I saw. You didn't, you didn't change that. You're still prohibiting billboards. But you've changed the definition of billboards in a, you're referencing a section of the Virginia Code that deals with outdoor advertising on highways. But that's also unclear. When you go back to that provision in the code, that, that's, that title of the code deals with highway regulation in general. And in that section, there is a definition for billboard signs, but that says billboard sign means any sign advertisement or advertising, advertising structure as defined in this section, owned by a person from a corporation, blah, 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 blah. So the section refers to the ordinance, I mean, the code provision, and the code provision exempts municipalities except if the signs are on certain federal highways. And it has a lot of carve-outs that I don't think are applicable for eliminating billboards. So I, I don't think it's clear what you're intending with that reference back to that code section. You could just keep, plus you've got the off-premises stuff, which again, I recall there was some discussion of that.
That would have disturbed my mind. If I could, could we, could you? I did just give you a time limit, but...
You did not. That was a mistake. So the other things that we're adding, of course, are animated signs, which are not currently in the ordinance. I'll point out that for flatlands, you, we don't have any size or location limits whatsoever. And so they can be as big as anybody wants and put anywhere they want. And also, that is content-based, and I don't know if we can get away with that or not. That's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to speak? A public comment period, I think that was, to warm up to the discussion where I think we're about to pick up. We got, up to 170-102, from one off-premise sign for 423. So my suggestion is we pick up there. It's okay with the rest of you. And then, you know, I'd say we'll give ourselves a solid two hours here if it works for folks. And then toward the end, if we're still, we're not finished with the text, I'd like to return to the, to the commentary in the Berkeley group just to collectively see where that leaves us. Thank you for...
I haven't had a chance to look at that. Does it make sense to do that first or last?
I, I think, so my understanding of this is, is that it is, it's kind of a quick read and some things to sort of inform the process rather than the results of a markup, which they, I believe, will be tasked with doing toward the end. So it might, I mean, we could certainly run through these if, and just to get an idea of where they, and one of the reasons I, I don't wanna jump into it, I'm afraid it'll take us into confusion, because they referenced the by-the-lines and I'm not sure which lines they're referring to. So I think we'll spend a bunch of our time just trying to track them down.
What they're talking about. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
So let's come back to it. Thank you. So to the point of off-premises signs, I think the principle here is this idea that we're going to, if you're advertising something, that you are a business or an activity that you are a property owner doing, you have some more leeway to put signage up than if you're putting up a sign or, or if you look at it either way. Either you're the business that is, for some reason, having an off-site sign, that you're presumably paying another property owner to post, or you're that property owner and you're advertising some activity that is not taking place on-site. This is, I believe, a completely new construct in, in the, the regulation. And so it's a little, it's a little abstract. But I guess, just looking through this, there are, you know, these are, again, all permitted signs. And there, it begins with a, a set of, you know, envisionable temporary signs. So anybody have anything they'd like to contribute to this? Again, this becomes, this is really abstract. It's hard to, you know, it, I don't know, it summers if, in each of these cases, you might be in the position to give us a, you know, a real-world example of something that was probably in mind when this was...
Right. So this section, the best thing that, the best scenario that I can give everybody for like existing signs is like the fruit stain signs, all along 211, 231, I wanna do whatever. There are some of the existing signs out there, they're direct, they're off-site, that they're directed you to that, to that location. And that's something to bear in mind, where all these existing signs that are currently out there, are, are we gonna try to find a way to carve them into this ordinance so that they become legal and legal? Or are we gonna go back and tell people to take them down?
I think our interpretation's kind of, kind of, the signs up 23, going to Jenkins Orchard, 621.
Sure.
Well, have it roll with you.
Yeah. Any of the fruit stains.
Well, I think Jenkins is really, to me, the max out example because they're trying to capture traffic off both 522 and 231. So they really need directional signs off two major roadways. And so is there a way to relate the number of signs also to, to roadways?
Well, I think the, I think that's kind of where this two-directional signs is coming from under item two. As I recall, the logic of two is sort of one on either direction from a road that you're on. Now, you're, to your point, I suppose if you need a separate sign facing northbound and southbound or, you know, in either direction, you're, you're now at four rather than two. So it does break down kind of quickly, but I think that was the intent of the two.
Okay. So I really, I really do see how more than two would be necessary in any number of scenarios.
Now, I don't recall, I believe some of those signs are both, you know, two-sided.
Yeah. And some of them, I think, could be considered temporary because they rotate out with the crops. But I think that there is a directional sign and just also sort of announcement-type sign on each of the major roadways, and maybe in each direction. So, and I mean, these are, my, my thought is that these are signs that have been up for a very long time. We have never had any complaints about them. And so I, I don't know why we wouldn't accommodate signs of this nature and number and size.
Well, also, where they, you know, that's, they're so lively though.
Exactly. And if we say that agriculture, that when we believe in agriculture, which we say again and again, and agriculture helps us preserve the scenic, unique character of the county, don't we want to allow a lot of signage for those kinds of operations?
Well, to be clear, and I don't think this is what you were getting at, but I think existing signs would be generally grandfathered, but you're, but I think your point is gonna generally be a new business that a hundred years from now is the Jenkins that isn't here today.
Well, let's think. Okay, a maximum of two-directional signs, temporary, should be allowed per non-residential use, including farms from their products or retail directly to customers. Would, would, so the issue there would be two-directional signs on a major road? Is there some way, then you could get...
You could take into account whether there's one road to do business or another. Maybe it should be, you know, per, per route or something.
Well, it says here, two A, establishment seeking a directional sign is not located on a primary highway.
But if they're two primary highways, shouldn't you get more than two-directional signs?
Well, but I think, but what you're saying is establishment seeking a directional sign is not located on a primary highway. If it's on a primary highway, what does that mean? You don't get any? I mean, that's, so there must be something else that, ah, it could go back to the definition of billboard or something.
Well, you just have your regular signs.
Signs.
You're your farm sign.
Oh, because you are on the road. So you, yeah, okay.
So it's not a directional sign. So I mean, I guess it could stay...
The only thing that bothers me is that, you know, this is an interpretation that would include all your wineries and vineyards. So if we get 100 vineyards and wineries in the county, do you then mark 400 signs on the road?
Yeah. Now, believe me, I'm trying to figure out what the other main thing is, but disturb the purpose of the, take the...
Well, I think that's, I think that's the other, doesn't, is this also getting after signs that Beadup currently puts up that just have a simple statement of...
Watering or...
Because these are supposed to be the directional signs that are limited in content to just direction, so.
Well, you did not, you mean like Frederick and Tannen?
I don't think so.
Yeah, that, that, that...
No, no, you're not gonna do it, you're not. But those, those are directional signs, right? They're, they're limited, I, I think, I'm not saying that this affects Beadup. I'm saying the way we define directional signs, and to go back to the beginning, is all they have on them is, you know, the name and, you know, a, a direction, you know, pointing, you know, basically. So if you go back to directional sign, any, any sign, the purpose of which is to indicate the location and direction to a place, project, product, function, et cetera, which is remote from the site or property on which the sign is directly displayed. Directional signs shall be limited to signs indicating the name of the place or business to which the sign pertains, and directional arrows or language indicating the location of the business. So my point is, these are not to be advertising kind of signs. It's kind of like Jenkins or Triggis Way kind of signs. Now, that's the idea. Whether this language actually accomplishes that, I think is certainly subject to discussion. Unfortunately, I think this is doing a lot harder than I think it is.
I, I think you can take any of these things and read it and determine around any number of ways. I, I think a simplistic approach to it, when you read it, is that if you got a business that's not on a primary highway, you could have two-directional signs to attract traffic to your business, period.
I think that is clearly the intent. The, I think the question, right, I'm sorry.
I mean, it's, it's an intent that Michelle could clearly relay. This is the intent. Okay, I mean, then, then what do you morph in off of that?
Well, and I guess if people really wanted more signs, they could apply for a temporary sign. And then if we got feedback that only two wasn't cutting the mustard, we could always increase it later.
That is true. I think this is the big step, is trying to get our stuff in a form that is more defensible. But, yeah, I mean, I would rather err on the side of protection in the first step and expansion later than regret that we do something that propagates a bunch of stuff. So after all this, is our, anybody wanna offer any improvements?
We need to say something, square feet. That's how I disagree.
I was thinking more 12, but, whatever you all think.
Two by four is eight, two by six is twelve. Two by four.
I don't think any of the signs we're talking about, they're directional signs, are even that big. Keep in mind, these are just the names of the business and the, and the arrows.
I can think of one that has a turn and a road number on it that's a little bit more than that.
The Jenkins one off 231, I think is...
Oh, it kind of gives you a little diagram map kind of thing?
Yeah. And a road number.
And you think that's bigger than...
We could split it for the same ten.
We could do it. Anything's a possibility.
If you do ten, somebody can do three by three, so, you know, so.
Two by five, three by three.
So...
Two square feet.
Okay, that's good. I like that.
We're, we're moving now.
I think that's fair.
We're moving now. So the, the theory is, if you're on a primary highway, you don't need one of these. Oh, make your comment. Unless there's somehow, maybe, maybe that comes back to what happened if you were on a primary highway.
Well, it must be in another section because this is the off-premises sign. That would be the on-premises sign.
Well, yes, that would be one type of sign on a major highway. The question to me is, what, you know, is, I guess it's on 211, there's never, you know, are there no directional signs that say, you know, keep going to, to get to? I think there are.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there are.
On 211, there are some that, but they're for the towns and for the skyline drawing in these places. Yeah, I'm not sure we want to encourage them.
Beach Springs. They have like, oh, Mrs. Turnaround.
Yeah.
So how would those be, those directional signs not be here or those?
Well, they're, but those are all premises, aren't they?
Okay, sorry. We are still under, so A was sign permit, but we're all under permanent signs. One is temporary directional, two is directional, maybe these are treated in, is that what you're suggesting? Let's go on to three and see what it does. In addition to directional signs, permit for sign, up to two off-premises signs being granted by special exception. So now...
Now you could have a big one.
Now you can have, they're still not located on a primary highway. So we're not, don't do anything to them other than a primary highway.
But basically, if you don't follow the number two and you wanna ask for more, give you that number three.
But they're all under off-premises.
That's a good point. To your concern about whether you limited to, you could get an exception, a permit for something.
And have some temporaries in the meantime.
But what I, to Mr. Henry's point, does not appear that there's any provision here that is allowing for an off-premise sign for a business located on a primary highway, which, again, I'm not suggesting we want to have more signs on 211 and 522, but it would seem that the signs like the ones you're talking about wouldn't be allowed.
Well, they're on premises.
They're on, all of them, not on, not all of them.
No, there's two off-premises. Right at the bridge.
For Beach Springs, they're on the off-premises.
I mean, but if you think about, you're on 211, you're on a primary highway, why do you need directional signs when you're gonna, ta-da, and here's my sign, here's my business?
I hear ya. I'm, I actually am happy with it, but I just think we ought to understand that that is in fact something that exists now that wouldn't be able to be reproduced then under this provision.
Pingo says turn around.
Yeah.
What was it, the wall drug or something that advertises for 100 miles and then finally gets placed in North Dakota?
So, okay, let's, the reality of the situation then is that you have some commercial and, you know, you have a little bit of commercial areas, you know, a little Washington kind of, out here, you know, called Business District in Sperryville. You know, there's, there's no real off-site signs for any of those businesses that are existing that are off.
Like two miles to the end.
Well, the state, the state doesn't take care of it.
Yeah. So if there's, there's really none, you know, you might have a few hot things going on in Sperryville with some, you know, small things that may have something, you know, one river has one down downtown that's a half mile away. But, you know...
What was that?
Across from the glass building place.
Oh, okay.
But, all right, I guess, which we're basically saying here, if you're on a main road, you're gonna get to the business, you're gonna see the business, and you're not gonna...
Yeah. So then, if, I agree. And it's, there's no need for additional signs, but there is, there actually is, I know, at least one sign for Beach Spring that advertise it, that's not, I mean, you know, we make grandfathering.
Well, I think that, again, we're not talking about, I think grandfathering is, is a given for permanent signs.
Well, I don't think we need all those, you know, like, one half mile to so-and-so.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it seems like it's, it's really not a problem. Yeah. Okay, so we're comfortable with that. Now we've got some gaps to fill in here in terms of size again.
Yeah.
So we went with ten above now. So these are presumably, the reason that these are called out is that they're, they're more intrusive, therefore you have to get, um, special exception permit. So presumably these are bigger than direct, than purely directional signs, or they could be.
Or they're additional to the two that you're permitted.
Yes.
That's the most.
And this would be the maximum the board could grant.
So what I think we're looking for here is to begin to build in these numbers because in this case, there's this, I'm gonna suggest we start with our ten from above because I feel like we, ten is plenty big.
Well, you know, there's banners like thirty yard tour, and now there's one for the Christmas, two for the Christmas.
On the two eleven.
How big are those?
Thirty-two square feet, only, four by eight, maybe a little smaller.
But those are temporary, right?
Three by four, four by eight.
This applies to temporary directional signs.
No, this would not.
This is permanent.
These are all, these are all permanent, permitted signs. So that's why we're now looking at area, height, and minimum distance from property lines, which is presumably to protect.
If they really have a special site condition that they have, and I guess the board, the board here, supervisors or?
Yes.
Well, come to us first presumably, just like every other special exception.
So if they really have an issue, probably would need to form a, a little issue. So I think it probably makes sense to cap it out every two feet.
Conditions could limit it below that.
Right.
Yes.
So, I hear an opening bid of thirty-two, I don't think.
Mile in, feedback is that under one seventy dash one oh six, line five oh seven, you can max out at twenty square feet, feet from the height, and you don't lose the closeness to the property line.
Yes, that's a good point. There are, you know, statements from the non-proprietary, which.
But I guess it could be more permissive zoning districts.
Well, we also, we've got a quarter of those gaps too, right? I think we're getting there.
So how do you feel, Joanne? Are you cheating? You probably feel.
No, I'm cheating.
Actually, it is, you know, some of these have axes, some of these have numbers, and I'm not sure if I would include an afterthought to take the numbers out as a means of making us fill them in. So, I mean, thirty-two seems pretty big, but.
Yes, seems pretty big to me.
But remember, they're taken here because of a reason. They have hardship that they're coming to report for. The belly of terrain, the fact, some, there's some hardship that has to be.
Where is that, why are you taking?
Well, because.
This is just a non-directional sign. This is.
By special exception from the board, only if site-specific conditions require, subject to the following limitations.
May be granted only by special exception from the board. Oh, look at that. Only if site-specific conditions require. All right, now, in addition to directional signs, for every lot or parcel located in that county and has received a permit for a son, so you have to have, had it, you've gotten a sign for your parcel, up to two off-premises signs shall be maybe granted only by special exception if site-specific conditions require. Ah, so this is for the case where Jenkins is too far to see, kind of thing? That's the.
Or maybe if, you know, maybe they sound in a hole and they want more visibility, that sort of thing. Are we going to, are we going to thirty-two eight and how many square feet from the line?
Sounds like a opening bid of thirty-two and eight. I think eight's the right number for height.
So then I'm thinking fifty, a hundred, or?
I don't think, I don't think the might from height, because you got, you're gonna have posts, and those posts are gonna bring it up four to six feet, and you've got four feet on top of it. I mean, four feet off the ground is not very much.
You thinking twelve?
I'm just saying, if you got, already got site conditions, you know, related to anything of topo or terrain, I, I think eight is not sufficient.
Again, if this is the, if this is the limit.
Right, the limit.
This is the limit that the special exception could limit further. So to that, to that point, I think this is sort of the maximum.
I think you should be, you know, ten, twelve.
A house could be thirty-five feet. I mean, just to get very simple.
Eight, twelve.
Yeah.
I think twelve would be.
It would be, it would be, if it's got grass or anything, I can kind of do it.
All right. Sounds like there's some consensus forming around twelve for the purposes of getting a working draft. And then property line distance, do you have any kind of precedent for these? What's the typical setback for like a hundred feet for many physical things? How, when you build your house?
That's what you're saying, but usually like a hundred feet from fifty sideways, but your son, you're gonna have closer. So you're thinking like, you know.
This is the opposite of a setback for a house.
Yeah.
It's an exchange.
Well.
A house, you can't have it by a hundred, but.
I mean, this is a hundred, ten fifteen feet?
No, I think, though, this, this is the idea that you can't go and put your big sign up right on your neighbor's property so you don't have to see it.
But this is closest you can go.
This is the off-site, this is, this is the, this is the parcel that isn't where the business is. This is the off-site parcel. So to me, the reason this should be big is you might want to put a sign up on your property for somebody else's business, but if you go and put it right up on the edge, you're essentially putting it, you know, your neighbor's probably gonna see it more than you are. So I think it is a setback.
If you have a minimum fifteen feet, but you wanna set it back a hundred feet, there's no issue. This will be, this would be the actually closest you can go.
You're talking about two to the property line, I think.
Yeah, one is.
One's, one's the road, and the other one's the neighbor.
That's, that's exactly right.
Yeah, like you, right. Being up on the road, the fifteen feet of that property line seems reasonable. But how far to keep it away from?
The neighbor.
The neighbor.
I think this is related to the neighbor. I don't know, but maybe, what would the property line?
Well, this is, that's your scene. Minimum distance from property line, any property line. Well, this is.
Yeah, I think it would be any property line. So, you might want it. I think the one that's operative, minimum distance, is the neighbor one that, that's what this is here for. Now, this is, you're kind of, maybe talking about the road itself.
That's different.
I think you guys are different either way then.
It's, yeah. You have to, you have to be out of the right way.
Yeah.
So.
But then if the neighbor comes and complains because you're going through the special exception process, the board can put a greater setback to accommodate that neighbor may have concerns.
To your point, it is a minimum, so.
So.
Can be, can be raised.
I think probably what we should be looking at here is that we set a distance off the road, like ten feet, whatever, off, off the property line of the road, and all the other setbacks has to meet to put a neighboring property. So let's say we got a rectangle or a square. So you got your ten fifteen feet to the front, and your side setbacks in this case, which will be relevant, I think should, should be the setbacks required in that zoning district.
Yeah, I agree.
Because it is a structure.
That's exactly where I was thinking, yeah. So it should be a hundred, two hundred.
Well, those, those are all setbacks inside, fifty, fifty. So you have to be fifty feet from the side setbacks. Maybe it should read that the front setback off of the state road will be ten feet. All other setbacks are gonna be just the setbacks of that, of that zoning district.
I, I think this one doesn't work well for the setback one because the property, your property goes to the middle of the road typically.
Well.
Well, but the, my point is, it's not a property line necessarily with the road. It's, it's the edge of the right of way. So it feels like we got two different issues. We got property line issue with your neighboring properties, which is, I think, the point of this one. And then you have distance to the road thing, which I don't know that you'd wanna minimize the distance from the road. You, you don't wanna say it has to be at least fifty feet from the road. You want it, you might want to limit how far it can be from the road. So I feel like this is the provision for the neighboring properties. And maybe we need to do something in addition with respect to the right of way, but I'm not sure we can do it in one line.
Okay.
So, we're talking about, so the property line. Are you saying, so you're, so the.
I'm saying the side setback, the side of your setback should be, uh, the setback to that, uh, contains to the structure of the zoning district.
So why don't we just say the minimum distance from property lines shall be the same as setback requirements for other, other structures, other structures in the district.
Just, I think we're ready to do this on top.
The subject zoning district.
You know, pass the thought, the front, front setback to his, that was probably more subjective.
Well, I, I think by, at least by referring to the zoning, maybe we can do it in one line. So here's what I wrote. The minimum distance from property lines shall be the same as the setback requirements for other structures in the subject zoning district.
But the only part of that, I think that addresses your neighbors, but it doesn't address the vitality of the sign because if your front setback can be, what, if it works that back on the highway, on the primary road, secondary road, there's two of them.
Oh, that, yeah.
How, how many?
Two fifty?
Two hundred.
You put two hundred feet off the road, and sometimes a thirty-two foot sign, it can't be.
So should we, okay, so, can we first do this neighboring part?
Adjoining?
Adjoining, but adjoining is not the.
Well, you could describe it as your side and rear setbacks. Your front is always gonna be your road.
Right.
All right, so the minimum distance from, problem is we're doing this, uh, shall be the same as side and rear. And rear setback requirements for other structures in the subject zoning district. Does that do it for you?
I think that takes care of the size in the back, but what do you have for the road frontage?
Well, let's see if there's anything more down the road here, so to speak.
Wouldn't that just be, you know, wherever, so long as they're not in the VDOT right of way, right? I mean, do we care how close it is to the property line?
You mean to the road?
Yeah, to the road, I mean, I was.
Center of, VDOT does, so I think the question is, do we need to do anything when VDOT does on that dimension? And I guess I'm thinking not, but once it, you know, as we started this conversation, I was only thinking about the side ones.
So what VDOT takes care of. So, okay, the, the sign has to be located on the fee simple ownership of the landowner. Agreed?
What's that based on?
What you own.
Oh, okay.
Fee simple ownership, landowner. So in other words, the sign's gotta be placed in your land.
Well, the sign can be placed on someone's.
No, it's gotta be placed in your land. It's your land, it's your sign, it's one property's sign.
No, no, it's not your.
You're the person presumably eight or.
So then, whatever that landowner is, has to sign just like the sign before, give permission. So it's gotta be on the fee simple parcel of somebody, okay? Whoever you rent this from. So then the only question is, how far back the fee simple ownership frontage of the property you're gonna put the sign on? So what do you wanna think about? You wanna think about the safety of the sign location? People run off the road, hit signs. So, you know, do you wanna put back, fifty onto the side, twenty feet onto the side? You know, that's kind of the ballpark.
Isn't that the purpose of VDOT?
Yeah.
That's if they wanna go.
What is this?
VDOT right of way is only to maintain their road.
Yeah.
Okay. So what does, does VDOT have?
VDOT has nothing to do with this.
Yeah, but they, they have their own signs, and I would think that these would be even beyond that, so.
They've done the engineering. I'm just saying, you put a sign and kill somebody, who blocks the view, someone pulling out a gun or something.
Okay.
That, Michelle would feel bad if you're convinced.
Thanks. Well, it would actually be approved by the board supervisors, some board supervisors.
So you're gonna say ten feet out of, you know, from the edge of the right of way? So you have that VDOT right of way, and then ten feet more.
You, you can put up your fence on your property line in the VDOT right of way. And if somebody runs through your fence, you're not liable for it. So if they put their sign on their property, if they put it back two feet, if I run through that sign, that's my, my problem. It's not the property owner. They cannot, if you have a tree, for instance, this plant, and boom, again, on your property, just to say, if it's only one foot off of the VDOT right, right of way, you're not liable for that person that runs in and hits that tree and kills somebody, given, it's property owner, not the owner of that.
But if you put up a sign, eight, thirty-two square foot, that blocks the view of someone pulling out, I mean, then you can't see the road, switches backward, whatever, thousand things.
Yeah, or another road comes in.
But then that, because that's not a, a natural structure, tree, that's something that was placed there, would that, if that person didn't be liable.
Well, I guess that's why there's a special exception process, that ideally will catch all those things in a special exception process, so that kind of thing will.
If VDOT, they come back and say, well, we're the provision of a sign, there's not act, sight distance for, you know, ingress, egress.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So for the frontage, I think, sign on the frontage would have to say, the sign, sign will be placed on, 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 on the private property enough within any right of ways of VDOT. This is VDOT number eight requirement.
Yeah.
But like what Michelle, somebody said he wants to go, there, there are roads where the ownership of the individual goes to the middle of the road, and it may be a paved road. So they actually own to middle of the road still. But then VDOT may have a twenty-five foot right of way in the middle of the road, back, back. So you wouldn't want any sign placed, this, this part of the owner's property, but you don't want a sign placed. So you gotta be out of the, any right of way owned by VDOT.
Okay, so.
But that's, do we need to, right, I mean, that's, that's VDOT.
That's, you know, we're doing, VDOTs should, we're also gonna do this. VDOT is not gonna prove the sign. If they come into a sign application, it's all gonna be governed within state, in, in, in the county.
Well, just like we defer to the health department though, and, and to ingress and egress for bed and breakfast, we would, we could seek.
Well, we could just say, look, the sign can't be in the, in the.
VDOT right of way. VDOT right of way.
Yeah. It's just so people get, are not in notice, but.
I think we'd also need to include something that protects and says it cannot present sight distance property. So that's just like with VDOT. So that's just like with VDOT, VDOT gonna grant you an entrance that, that is not within, in the, in the, you know, sight distance. So somehow we have to say that these signs cannot create a sight distance.
Yeah.
I think, maybe just, um, let me write something in here. They won't play it down. No friendly practice.
VDOT, yeah. That's 'cause they never get around to it, right? They're just, they're about to get, they're about to work. But it takes a few months, or not, to the idea that they like that. But they have a sign there just.
When you, what do they call it, when a site?
Use the word safety, so then when the board looks at this, they can tune into our word safety, and any decision they make can be used based on the word safety.
So this is a example out of Page Kenny's, um, statenorming strategy, actually, over, over here right now, that the Berkeley group assisted them with. One of the provisions in there, signs, signs shall be sized and/or located, so it's not to impair any sight distance reasonably necessary for pedestrian or traffic safety. Such determination to be made as, determination to be made as determined by the zoning administrator and/or Virginia Department of Transportation.
This is perfect.
Yep, like it.
Copy of Page's.
Bring it here.
You got it, you basically bought it.
Yeah.
The best, that should be true for all signs.
I mean, not only premises signs.
Yeah, this is under their section for.
I've never heard of VDOT.
General requirements.
I mean, I've never heard of VDOT getting into the sign business, I mean.
Other than putting.
There is a, um, there's a person who works for VDOT at a regiment, and all he does is signs outdoor and outdoor. I've met the man.
What was he contacting you about?
This was when I was on Page.
Big sign on the sign.
Uh, first it was billboards. Um, they keep a list of every billboard in each locality with their little license plate numbers. But then we were looking at revising our sign ordinance, and he actually came in and met with us and gave us the rundown pretty much on what they regulate and what they don't. Which they really care about, um, your, um, your right of highways.
So, I'm sorry, I was trying to write, and I'm listening too closely. Sounds like the language that you read sounded good. I guess I'm now questioning, does that fit here, or it sounds like that is a.
General, general provision.
So if we like that, and it helps us here, maybe we should be thinking about where that fits.
Yeah.
Do what you want there.
I scrolled it out now. So here's what I said, signs may not be placed in, within a right of way and may not restrict line of sight for driveways or otherwise present a safety hazard for pedestrians or traffic.
Impede. Restrict line of sight.
Impede rather than restrict, is that what you're?
For pedestrians and traffic.
pedestrians and traffic. Now, I'm sure that there's more, I'll just pose a minute.
Can you repeat what Page tried to do again?
Signs shall be sized and/or located, so as not to impair any sight distance reasonably necessary for pedestrian or traffic safety. Such determination to be made as determined by the zoning administrator and/or Virginia Department of Transportation.
So they said impair line of sight.
So you take, take, take your beginning thing, read the very first, like, almost first sentence there.
Signs shall be sized and/or located, so as not to impair any sight distance.
Signs should, signs should be located outside of any VDOT, uh, right of way. And then proceed.
Did you say located?
Shall not be located within any VDOT right of way, and then proceed with what?
Sight distance reasonably necessary for pedestrian or traffic safety.
As determined.
By the zoning administrator and/or VDOT.
And/or, and/or ward.
But this is under special permit, so we don't have to add any of that. Because this is gonna come, this is going to be the body decision process associated with the special, special.
Exception.
Exceptional permit. So I don't, I think it would be redundant to repeat the bodies and then get us mixed up. So I think we could limit it to the, to the requirement of not having that, and whoever's responsible.
So you put a period before the, before, before the zoning administrator?
I don't think the zoning administrator is appropriate here.
Before, but, but before, that's what, if you put it before, then she's out, the mark out, the balance of.
Oh, oh, before, okay, I thought you were breaking up, yeah, yeah, listen, you're closely.
I've got a lot of pressure to be here tonight.
Thanks for the warning.
So, so, so read that, how we just said, shall I tell that sentence?
Signs located, first you said outside, then you said within.
I have signs must not be in VDOT right of way.
Signs located outside any VDOT right of way.
Okay, good, continue.
Reasonably necessary for pedestrian or traffic safety.
Should be placed at such rate of.
I bet I had a bit more, I have, I have, it must not be in the VDOT right of way and not impair the line of sight for tra- traffic and pedestrian safety.
Good, have you done?
That's better, but almost what I have, so that's, I think that's, that's a good refinement.
You use that word pedestrians, that really sounded good.
So, okay, so now, you wanna, Michelle, do you have that? I don't wanna have some of the.
Actually, yours might be that clear.
No, I don't think so, I think, here's what I said, signs may not be placed within a VDOT right of way and may not impair line of sight. See, I had driveways or, so we don't wanna talk, line of sight is an issue for driveways, so.
Impede.
Well, I changed it to impair because of that language, but maybe we don't need to talk about driveways. Does anything else have a line of sight requirement? Turning lanes?
I think the conclusion using pedestrians is, is good.
Signs may not be placed within a VDOT right of way and may not impair line of sight for.
Pedestrian.
Pedestri- for pedestrian and traffic safety. Period, period. That's it, that's it, period. Do you, do you have that one?
I got it.
I'm gonna stick it from my, I'm gonna stick this real clear on there, you got it?
Signs may not be placed within a VDOT right of way and may not impair line of sight for pedestrians and traffic safety.
I think that is the end.
Wow, my Page Kenny really came out there.
Okay, did we ever fill in a number for the, oh, no, we didn't, we said the side setback requirement. Do you have that language, Michelle? Proceed.
I have, um, none of them from road, well, side and rear setbacks would be that of the, um, specific zoning district.
Okay.
Or subject zoning district.
And, and the front setback should be determined by board?
I thought we just dealt with that.
It's, yeah, we're not gonna worry about it, other than it's not in the right of way, it's not gonna care.
And Michelle, I just wanna make sure you've got these numbers, so for back at B, you had ten, and then three A, you had thirty-two, and three B, you had twelve.
Yeah.
Okay. Shall we move on?
Yeah.
Nonconforming, so, so here, um, this is the general findings. Shall be removed by nineteen ninety-five, that seems to have been updated.
Well, I can say, Paige, you cannot make somebody, um, removal of billboard signs is prohibited without, um, just compensation, so I don't know that we wanna be in that business.
So I guess, well, let's take these, I just want, I just want to see them, like, sounds like here we have different cate- different categories where nonconforming signs, first provision in A just says, if you're lawful when things change, you're still lawful.
Yeah, so, but that makes the last thing, it's not entirely clear.
Well, it's, the use becomes unlawful, so is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, but it says nonconforming uses or accessory uses are such nonconforming uses as set forth in Article Eight of this chapter. As of the effective date of this article, shall continue to be lawful as nonconforming uses in accordance with such article. Provided, however, that in the event that the nonconforming uses become unlawful, an unlawful use, then the subject sign shall be deemed an unlawful sign, you know? That sentence goes around and around and around, and it's, the reason it's nonconforming is it's currently unlawful, right? And they're not.
No. So you can have, um, a business that's been in existence for the past hundred years, with their own property zone, whatever. After your use isn't allowed by right of that.
No.
Zoning district, but they've operated this entire time. And they've had a sign this entire time, that is a lawful, nonconform use. Say they closed down two years, somebody says, well, I'm gonna go back in there and not go there, no, not a business, I'm gonna use that sign out there.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I'm not sure that's what this sentence says.
Well, this is also, doesn't really work because you got onsite signs and offsite signs, and this seems to be assuming that the signs are related to a use on that property. And if it's an offsite sign, it has nothing to do with the use of the property of your advertising.
Correct.
So that's another issue. So what is the point of that second part, we're just, it's just providing.
I think this is something that was generated years ago across the state, uh, to address a lot of billboards that, uh, had become unpopular and, and the ordinances were written all over the state to, to, to stop these billboards, but the ones that were already there had to be addressed, had to be grandfathered. But the whole process was that we're gonna slowly kill them, either by people not maintaining them, that have been abandoned after two years, and they can't be used again, or the business goes out of business, then this is just, it was another way of attrition to get it out.
Yep, well, I think that's typically what's done, but what, that, I don't, that doesn't really explain the last half of, you know, like, agree. I mean, A is setting up that basically, if you're nonconforming when the rule changes, you're okay.
Right.
Except for this last part, that says if it becomes unlawful, I agree with you, that seems completely circular. If it did become unlawful, you wouldn't be nonconforming.
Correct, exactly.
Unless there's a difference between conforming and unlawfulness, but this is, if you're not conforming with the zoning, you think that's the same as being unlawful.
Yeah, and it says continue to be lawful, so what, you know.
Yeah, right, it uses the language both ways. I think we need a lawyer for this.
I think we need to strike it as well.
This is the second part.
It's not adding.
You need to strike, or provide a.
Yeah.
Well, unless, I guess, I wonder if the term unlawful sign.
Well, it doesn't create any additional signs by leaving it in there. I mean, it only provides some kind of odd ball mechanism for removing a sign, so I would be the one. I, I, I agree with Brian, and I, and I understand what Michelle said, and I think that was a good interpretation of how that could be used. And I don't, next thing is, I don't think we have broken grandfathered signs in the county, we got the big one up in Sperryville, but.
Well, we're going to after we pass this change, we're gonna have a lot of, you know, not billboards, but other.
In terms of billboards, we have.
Yeah, but I mean, this is dealing with all the stuff, we just talked about the one in Sperryville where they couldn't do it if they started today, but they're gonna be able to keep the, you're almost there, you're there, you missed it, uh, signs, we're not gonna make them terribly bad.
I think it's fine, and really, we won't be the only ones wrestling with this language, and it's already in there, I think, I think we're likely to remove it, because it's not been a problem before. Because it was amended in two thousand fifteen, there must have been a reason it was amended.
There must be some term of art about what an unlawful sign is.
That's what I'm thinking.
There's something special about that, there's probably some other section that could be about unlawful, nonconforming signs. But, okay, so we're gonna leave the language as proposed despite the discomfort. All right, so now, however, nonconforming signs are damaged, but now.
I think it's, it's really bad to have a paragraph that you can't understand, that an average person can't understand.
Well, I thought the way Michelle unpacked it was good, and we can certainly, you know, in a meeting with the county attorney president, we're wrestling with it, we can unpack it for us further.
This is not the end of this.
No, no, no.
No.
It's the end of the beginning.
Number B is not, you have a question. What could this be?
Anyway, it's the end of the beginning. All right, so, you okay, Steph?
Yeah.
All right. B, however, nonconforming signs have damaged more than half of the appraisal, and one half of the, whichever is less, shall not be repaired or replaced, and shall be removed. The extent of damage shall be determined by the building inspector, so this is a, you know, if a nonconforming sign gets run over, you can't put it back.
So is the half a change, Michelle, and what was it changed from?
It's the, you know, this model ordinance that's fifty percent.
No, I think that, I think it just put it in fraction form.
Okay, it made it red?
Yeah.
Steph, you, Steph, did you just say that?
It's just, there's a model ordinance that, that says fifty percent.
Okay.
All right.
Carry it.
In any event, all billboards shall be removed by nineteen ninety-five, but I guess the main reason that's in here is, is next part. Any billboard upon which no data of presence is prepared, consists of two years, shall likewise be removed. I mean, I really puzzled by the reference to nineteen ninety-five.
Shouldn't we strike that, just leave the second part in?
It should say that all billboards should have been removed by nineteen ninety-five. They should say that all billboards should have been removed by nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah.
Any billboard models, no data of presence.
Two years? This seems like a long time to have an empty billboard sitting there.
That's any nonconforming use.
Hmm?
Any nonconforming use is said due to your dedication.
But we don't need that second sentence, too.
I don't think we need a fresh one.
Don't we, don't we want to, any of them, all billboards shall be removed, period?
Well, we can't.
But they were supposed to be removed by nineteen ninety-five.
I was gonna say, it sounds like that's one of the things the state kind of took care of for us in a way that maybe didn't accomplish what we wanted to accomplish.
Well, but doesn't it raise the question, are they, do we have any billboards according to these rules?
Yes, we have eleven.
We do?
We do.
Eleven?
My question is, for your house, huh?
We have eleven registered with the Department of Transportation. Yeah, I have the list.
So, what does, I mean, the question of what was this night, which said all billboards shall be removed by nineteen ninety-five? Where is that coming from?
Good question.
That probably goes back to...
Because you can't make them.
Nah, it probably goes back to the sigils, when you had Lady Bird come home, playing with the interstate highway signs and all that, it's probably built it.
She gave him thirty-five years?
Spilled over the bank, to generate...
And they still didn't pay you.
But there was, I mean, the sign lobby is pretty.
Oh, yeah.
Because there is a sign lobby, and I got, I'm very good at lobbying, I'm very, signs are a big business. So, you know.
Okay, so, are we, are we in the same place that we're seeing no value in continuing to propagate the future reference?
Well, the shell...
Not unless we're gonna get the DeLorean.
Took a lot of words to say there, Jerry.
Are we just doing that for you?
I mean, it was fine here, but I don't think we're going back there.
So we're just gonna have, we're skipping that first part, we're sitting in a billboard. Knock out the first one, Michelle. Okay, one more here. I'm not gonna read this one out.
Oh, wait, oh, but I thought we were allowing any billboards.
Yeah, but we take care of that tomorrow else.
We're not allowing any new ones. This is to give the nonconforming ones that already exist.
So we think the people are continuing to pack?
Well, they are.
Oh, they are.
Eleven, if it's not nineteen ninety-five.
There's some nice new advertisements on the one, I shouldn't say nice, but there's some new advertisements on the ones outside of Sperryville that I've never seen before.
Yeah, they change them all the time.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I need to pay more attention.
One top page, you can't miss it.
Also, the T-Mobile one?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that one, okay.
All right, so, I think we're on to D, all the nonconforming signs. Okay, so now you're a nonconforming sign, but you still gotta get a permit.
That's how you kinda register your nonconforming sign.
Okay, so here you go, here's the difference between an illegal sign and a nonconforming sign. A nonconforming sign is a sign that doesn't conform, but you at least registered it, you got a permit. And if you don't do that, now you got yourself an illegal sign, so that maybe helps.
Maybe at the end of the day, is that this is all in, that you need to effectively do your job, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's really good, we need to license it, huh?
Oh, absolutely, huh?
Go check that.
All right, so that addresses everything associated with nonconforming signs that get to stay up and that removal.
So, can I give an example, um, from keeping in mind in this section?
Yeah.
Um, so rural signs, empty values should work out to everyone. Okay, they've been closed for how long?
Yeah.
Are their signs just still up?
Are they empty?
No, they're signs.
But that's the store that you brought back, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So do we wanna let them continue, or should we make them take the other ones? I mean, they've closed off.
They've closed off, where you're from?
Hackleys.
Doors are closed. She, she mentioned Hackleys, so, here you go, so what is it?
The Hackleys, I think, continue.
It's not being used. When does, when does a store become a landmark? When does a landmark become a local historic store? You mean like the Lombardi?
Yeah. That's one of my favorites. There was a restaurant years and years ago.
But is it still, it's something that doesn't have any words on it?
Just something to think about.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I just wonder, because we're allowing billboards to sit empty for two years, but somehow, the sign that was attached to a business that's empty is worse than an empty billboard.
Well, I, you know, you, you take a business that closes, and I, I'm, I'm assuming that the sign that empty values would be an illegal sign, it would be permitted again, you know? If it's there, we know potentially what's gonna be there if it opens back up, the more likely we'll, we'll use that sign because signs are expensive to make. So we know what's already there. If it wasn't offensive now, a new sign may be offensive, so...
I'm, I'm just telling you.
I'm just talking about the...
Oh, absolutely.
So, did you just kinda let it be a landmark, or, or, or do you, do you limit and have the people start over?
Well, given, I think the common senseical aspect of this is, if the business goes, there's no reason to have a sign.
Yeah, well, there's also...
It's not about the structure, you know, you don't get to write over it, I mean, the sign is...
Okay, I don't, I don't know if there's a sign below a store.
There's a lot of stuff.
Outside, outside, is the sign sitting below a store?
And that's all about.
Yeah, there's a sign that says Nykron.
You know, doesn't it, I assume it's, the venue base not...
No, uh, well, there's one on the, on the store.
Okay, okay.
Isn't there a little font sign on it?
There's one, that's one that says...
So, so, so if they close, and they got a sign on the billboard, I mean, should that be taken down after two years? It's right next to you, you see it? It improves your life and makes you feel better? Or is it kinda good to have it there? For some, for good reason.
Is that
Yeah, the business closes, they got a sign.
So is it your suggestion that we take this one oh seven dash one oh four A out?
Which means every sign lives forever, because you could, it's a then, it comes back, and then it's over, right? And now, since you got it in, you know, now, now you just made it a valuable thing for, you know, somebody else to put their, their message on, so, I mean, I, I, I think the point here is we're allowing these signs to promote the local business, that was kind of, that's what this is about, so... It does seem general, if there's no business, there shouldn't be a sign associated with the business. And if you start a new business, you ought to get a new sign, that, that's how I see it. But, I mean, are there exceptions for, you know, historical landmarks or things? I think so, but that, that maybe should be the exception, not the rule.
How do you determine that?
Well, I don't know yet, he read.
Michelle's gotta treat everybody the same.
Well, you know, maybe the thing to do is the owner has to, uh, let's see.
Run it inside out.
Uh, or ask for some kind of designation. I mean, otherwise...
How many complaints have you received?
I think Hackleys will come back, it always goes, you know, goes dormant.
I don't think that, yeah. Who could say that, empty values won't come back? They've been out for a while, but they did come back once.
Well, the owner died, and now, so, so it's all transitioning.
So it's, they closed again, then?
Well, man, it's a big, how big of a issue? We, we're talking about two, is a huge part to squeeze and go on after to take that sometime down.
I think there's a difference between an offsite sign and one there on premises, too, you know? The business isn't there anymore, you don't need signs directing it there, or that type of sign needs to disappear.
So we could, we could change it to be any offsite signs pertaining there, too, shall be removed. I mean, is that, is that what you're getting at?
You know, as a start, I'd agree with two thirds of them. I think this is written very nicely, and I would just simply put that at the end of that paragraph, this applies to only offsite signs, off premises signs.
Or you could just put all, any offsites on the second. Let's see, whenever the use of building premises by a specified business is discontinued, any offsite...
Any off premises signs pertaining there, too, shall be removed. That keeps the, that keep, because...
It keeps the signs in place on off premises.
Well, and also, you know, the people that have those businesses, having the signs there, even if the business isn't operating, helps prospective buyers kind of really see what could happen, and that might help, you know, because there's also Sperryville trade is for sale, and that has a sign, and, you know, if you didn't have those signs to show people what had been there before, it might, yeah.
Laurel Mills will always be the Laurel Mills store, even if it's a residence.
So, are we growing comfortable with this being only applicable to off premises signs? I mean, I like that, too, because then we can send, we keep those corner lots from being essentially little billboards, right? Because if you strike a deal with one business, it doesn't automatically just carry over to the next.
I agree.
Sounds good.
So, Michelle, you got that, off premises?
Whenever the use of a building for a premise by a specific, specified business or occupation is continued, any off premise signs pertaining there, too, shall be removed.
This one.
Does everybody go with that?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, well, you're about that at some point, but it's good for now. Uh, zoning administrators shall give you notice to remove, so this is the enforcement procedures. Michelle, does that work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Either B?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you get to remove them yourself, under C.
We have a photograph of that.
Absolutely. I want loads.
We can change his to her, okay, he'll do it in contact or something.
Pound? Pound, did he have a sign in pounds in Eric or something?
No.
You imagine, I'm here, but you have a pile of those sky highs.
You have your whole closet over there.
What closet? I don't even have a closet.
You could probably hire my son as your authorized representative. Uh, okay, so that's just the rules for how you take them down, and then, and then it becomes a... Well, that's interesting, too, here, because it does really acknowledge that they're in a public right of way in violation of any provision in this article, now there is a provision.
Yeah.
For me. Uh, okay, so then D, it becomes a safety hazard, whereas not kept in their general condition.
Hang on a second. Hey, hold on a second. In a public right of way, that's not our purview, is it?
Yeah, no, it's not supposed to be, that's what I was, but I wasn't wanting to get into that.
Wait, what happened?
Well, public right of way, is that D done?
That's what we just said back before, you can't build in the public right of way.
Well, that's not our job, really. That wasn't what I was gonna say, he brought that in.
Oh, oh, what were you gonna say? I didn't say it.
I wanna change that dollar, one dollar forty-five to ten dollars.
Oh, you got inflation, that's...
Yeah.
I like that, ten dollars per bed.
Storage!
Makes work, Michelle's kind of, yeah. All right. They each say it's storage.
Yeah, because there's no place to store it.
Yeah, we're gonna say, yeah, we, you can hire a mini, you can rent a storage.
We can build in another apartment.
I got the heart of the planet.
So we're serious, we're gonna take that and go there, ten dollars, they can wear that.
That's like, that could, that could turn up.
I'm gonna go on.
Now you're incentivized. Any sign that becomes a safety hazard, in public condition, there's no reason to be, it isn't repaired.
Obliterate.
That requires a whole nother sentence.
It's the same line that we all have, right? We should obliterate that.
Because I don't know, you need it in a danger like a copy of your...
Nobody knows about it yet.
So this is interesting, going back to the stuff before about signs that are unsafe. This is another provision that would have caught those signs that are blocking views or rooms, right?
Yeah, a little smidgen.
I know, but it also shows some consistency, if zoning administrator sees a sign as in danger, so that's...
I think, I think that's about eight lines that'll never be used, but the sign is like, don't play with the cats, you know?
All right, E, let's keep going here, any written notice regarding zoning administration, that's standard. All right, so, we made it through one seventy oh, oh, four. Was there anything there, we never came back to anything about on highway signs, so there was nothing there. So, we're allowed to waiver and enlarge them.
Yeah, there's one.
Okay, so now we're, any signs that may wage or otherwise enlarge by issue of a special exception. But we also limited those... How does that interplay with back here, where we said the maximum is thirty-two? So... So does that mean they can waive the thirty-two square feet of one oh two point one three A? So what's the point that we did in here? I guess that is a special exception.
Well, I think that what we do is we just take out this entire one oh five.
Well, it might, it might address another area that doesn't allow for anything, but this would. This would allow for any sign.
Not just the ones that require a special exception. So this is, this presumably was designed for those
To be catchall.
That don't require, otherwise require a special exception. But I jumped to the part that might be in conflict, because those ones that we put that thirty-two feet in already require a special exception, so...
But those are all kind of signs, right, so, we're talking about signs that are both on premises and off.
A sign.
So I guess that also means that their hands aren't really tied by what we put in those limits. They have to come in and get a permit, and then we get a shot at it. So...
So we just pop down to one oh six now?
Yeah, now here, this is where we're getting to, how big is the sign?
Does this be consistent? Should not exceed thirty-two feet or twelve feet?
Which numbers are here in the...
We're, we're at one oh six total signage.
The question's for total. The first one's for total, next one's for private, and the third one's for.
So what's the difference between this? So this is.
So this is one site in this specific zoning district. Total signage per lot or parcel in conservation, agricultural, rural residential, residential, resident, residential village, and mobile home park zoning district shall not exceed an aggregate of X square feet, nor more than X amount of feet height, nor be closer than X amount of feet in private land.
But now, this is limited to, this wouldn't be limited on space up to all its, on premise or off premise.
Right.
This is.
Effective to all.
Any parcel. So is there anything that says a parcel can have both on premise signs for a business that owns or off premise signs for some other business?
No, but we don't want that whole parcel to be burdened or too much.
Right, so this gets to that. This is to keep these corner lots from becoming sign lots, basically. For these visiting lots. So this is, someone, I I always bring that up, is someone mentioned that this is maybe designed for on premises, but there's nothing here that limits this application to on premises. This would be any signage on a given parcel will be limited in this direction, within this district. So you want to repeat your question now because I feel like we did.
What do we do with ten feet? What was that?
We did that.
Thirty-two.
We made them, we made them. We made them hire for off-site because they're already coming in for a permit. And the idea was the permit conditions could reduce it because the idea was we were putting loose handcuffs on the permit. But then we realized there are no handcuffs anyway because if you come in for a permit, the permit can change, waive any of the size requirements.
But, uh, but this is saying, like I said, you've got a corner lot that people are using. So we said earlier, like a Jenkins sign could be, could be ten square feet, right? So you have, if you had thirty-two square feet here, then you could have three people with signs on there. Right?
If it's.
That's right.
So that's that's an issue that we.
Yeah, it's ag, yes, it's it's trying to prevent the proliferation of signs on this. That's what this is intended to do. So the aggregate.
So do we, so do we want more than, I mean, do we, do you got one three by three sign? Do you want two? Do you want one, two, one, three? What becomes a burden in a?
Well, I go total area. So to me, the height and the setback should be the same no matter how many signs there are. None of them should be over the height and none of them should be within the setback. The only thing that seems to be a question to me is do we want to allow multiple signs so that the aggregate square footage can be more than that of an individual? I don't think we want to have them stacked on top of each other.
So, okay, you got six twenty-one where Jenkins ought to do it. You get two people, three people, and go there, put venue climbing, a brewery is on that road. So a sign at the same location Jenkins are is, we have five twenty-two and two thirty-one. It's just as vital to them. So do you, should we say, I mean, what consideration would you give these people?
That is the question before.
That's an example.
Think about two, how big a signs does Brown want to see a congestion gap?
Sir. So that's that's a question.
Well, one thing you could do, you could differentiate between residential areas and mobile home parks.
Well, we do. That's this, that's this last part that was previously identified as being unclear. So you get this first part, which is trying to aggregate them everywhere. And you can say lots of parcels with this solely residential use are not eligible for a sign permit that is otherwise permitted through the section. So basically, we're not, we're not allowing signs. See, I don't quite understand. I agree with the concern that MK raised. I don't know what. Lots of parcels with solely residential use, does that mean they're zoned residential?
No. If you have a, can I explain this?
Yes, please.
So if you have a lot, say it's your, the lot your house is on, and the only thing you have there is just your home. We don't want you to go out and put this huge sign on it saying, the lights, blank, 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 Laurel Mills Road, Castleton, Virginia, and just have this huge sign up there stating this.
Yeah.
You don't want all premises signs in residential areas.
Well, this would, this would also address that. But this is theoretically, I wouldn't be.
So so most of your intersections with with this is happening with, are going to be two intersections. It'll be a second A road comes in, and then a third time A road. T intersections, not a four-way. Because that's it. So you got two corners that are potential for signs. Well, now Ben Benidie, this is an example where it's a kind of a, you know, two roads there. You got seven twenty-nine on each side. You could have, you know, you kind of multitude of signs there potentially.
All down to there. I guess.
The only thing that saves you there is that, uh, that property is on the east and the city is in there. Probably have sign restrictions there.
So let's just step back a second here because there's a thing that just occurred to me is. So what's happening here is one oh six is just for special things that they're resource preservation residential signs. And then the next section is going to talk about residential and industrial signs. So now we're going stepping down by zone.
Instead of the type of sign?
Yeah.
As in verification signs, the whole occupation, instead of calling those out individual, we're going, okay, if you're zoned agriculture and conservation, if you're zoned, you know, RR five, this is what type of stuff? You know, this is a size sign you can have, this is how tall it can be.
Yeah, so we're talking before about individual signs. Now we're talking about multiple signs in a given type of park.
Right, not the type of signs, but what signs, you know, what size, allowing, what zone of districts.
So these presumably are the most sensitive. These, this would be the zones that we would want to be most restricted, presumably. So now let's go back over here to get a gold sign. So do we want to have multiple ones in these districts? This is agricultural. So this is most of the county, this one. All all of it would be in this first set.
Is there anything about commercial and industrial, isn't it?
Yeah, in fact, that that title is misleading because it makes it seem like it's only dealing with resource, wait.
Resource.
Does that include agri paper?
If you, if you look at our, or has resource preparation.
Got you. It's inconsistent, thank you.
Almost throw out thirty-six feet. And the reason I say that is that two by five signs, you know, kind of a ten square feet. You put four of them up there, they're kind of going up, a little more intrusive than if you had, uh, four three by threes. If you had three by threes, you could have, that would be thirty-six square feet. Four signs, two on each side, or four on one side, or none on the other, or three on one. I think that would be the biggest burden that you want to consider. But you might want to consider less burden on the corner.
So you're proposing that instead of twenty square feet in that first one, that we say thirty?
Six.
Thirty-six. Is that what you're proposing?
Have we said twenty?
Well, the land, well, the word, but what's in there says twenty. I'm just trying to keep people in check. That first, so the rate was originally set as twenty.
Now it's only a suggestion.
But I think it makes sense to think about this in terms of how many signs does it equate to? Because back here, you just set the limit on sites of each sign. So it ought to be presumably multiples of the limit of other signs, right?
The sidebar of what we're doing tonight is that we're creating value. We are, because if you if you have a situation like you have on Loudoun, when you have in West Public County, where you have two dozen breweries and wineries on the road. If they know there's only, if this ordinance was in place, that we had the same situation here. They can only get four signs at the intersection of the road. So the landlord could then charge up the market there to allow a sign there. So we're creating value in that.
Congratulations.
It's just a sidebar of what's happening.
That's temporary. I'm going, I'm still looking for what we said about square foot. So back here.
Off-site?
Well, off-premises.
I was looking for.
Directional. Directional sign is maximum area of ten square feet, so you could have, so you could have, you said thirty-six. You could have four. Close to forty. Well, I guess you could make it eight or nine, yeah, that's what you were saying, you get your nine by four. So thirty-six would get you four directional signs that are three by three.
That that seems excessive.
Hold on.
I'm not going to that.
Okay, let's just play it out because that's that's one relevant number. And the other relevant number is the under one oh two one off-premises signs. I agree, you said the maximum area of the sign could be thirty-two square feet. So you only get one of those honkers if you had a thirty-six. But presumably, if they came in and wanted two, so you, so it looks like you have roughly four direction, at thirty-six, you have roughly four directional signs and one of these other special exception signs for all premise signs. Do we want to allow more than? I mean, to me, I kind of like, I I don't think it's, doesn't bother me too much that you don't only get one of the big ones because if you, if you really are trying to put two up, then make them just twenty. Yeah, and, you know, if you're getting your two signs, but you're making them smaller and we're not having to put up with propagation more. But to me, we ought to look at this in terms of how many of these different kinds of signs could we have? The aggregate in that way. Thirty-six does at least get you, you know, one of the, one sign of the biggest that you're allowed under the permanent. Or presumably, you could, you could get approval for smaller ones and then you could add more.
But this, and this, but this is total signage per lot or parcel. So how many signs do we want to permit per lot?
That is the question.
Yeah. That seems like.
You think that is.
Too excessive. What do we have now?
I think, I was thinking of this in terms of off-site intersections. This is how I was framing that, but I mean, you look at someplace like, uh, Ben Benidie, you know, what's what's the total signage? Now, he should be allowed, is thirty-six square feet enough there?
Which parcel are you referring?
No, that's a good.
In the commercial. Zone that.
It is nothing.
That's it.
Everything.
We're exactly.
He's got signs there.
So then, so what?
Yeah, that's a good.
Oh, you're talking about, I see you're on the highway.
Yeah. Well, but also, how many banners should we say that they could have?
Well, temporary, okay, so temporary signs have, that's all covered by what we dealt with. Now we're only in the realm of permanent signs. But actually, that's just the point. This is referred to just aggregate of that.
It's not.
But this really isn't saying anything about permanent or temporary except, I guess it is because it's in the section for permanent signs.
No, I don't think so.
One oh six.
One oh six, it doesn't say anything.
Play for that matter. One of the two temporary signs, you know, one oh two, one is off-premises signs. There's something funny about the numbering.
Yeah, I think it's applicable to all.
That's, you know, so. But it is, we are primarily talking about conservation ag. I know the vision's kind of, I don't know. We're only going to have one mobile home.
And how many signs can you put there?
Well, yeah, and I don't think there'd be any more. Well, so what's the total signage for one of conservation ag? For bars, thirty-two feet.
Thirty-two would get you one of the larger ones that we allow. And then the, okay, so.
Okay, so that's good. So but we're rewriting this.
So instead of ag, you're getting twenty, you're saying thirty-two square feet.
But we're taking out residential, rural, residential, residential.
Thirty-two or thirty-six?
I think we're, we're back to thirty-two, one sheet of uncut plywood. Thirty-two would also be consistent with what we did back at one oh two. So I like the idea that you can take it in one or multiple smallers.
Can we increase the height then, too?
I I thought it, oh, yeah, yeah, to the ten.
To twelve.
Twelve, twelve.
And then, uh, carry over that same language about setbacks?
Yeah, I think so. So are you following that, Michelle?
Yep, I agree.
So this is just as per one oh two point, why, I'm sorry to interrupt, but one oh two point beyond the off-premises signs. When one oh two is temporary signs, something seems funny about the number. Uh, maybe that's the issue.
Sorry, I opened here. One oh, one seventy-one oh two ten, but the sign, um, one seventy-one point one off-premise signs.
You would think that since off-premise sign is not a subset of temporary signs, it wouldn't be within one oh two. So there's mystery that would enter, I think we might just need to take a look at the number structure.
Because you also, it should be on the, but signs requiring permits, right?
Yeah, something is not right in the section number here. I'm not, I'm not going to take our time here to transmarse through that. But just noticed that we wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we got thirty-two, we got, we got those front numbers filled out. We're making it twelve and the same setback language and safety pedestrian stuff before. Now, wait a minute, now we've got another one of these. However, on lots facing Goldenwood Street, signs not exceeding ninety-three of another total of the grid street. Oh, okay. So this is getting to this point where if they're, they got two frontages, you can have signs on each of the lots. That's what that's getting.
So we can only remain there?
Well, we're just now getting our heads around the fact that we're now taking one part. So it's not just how many parcels you got. parcel, just, do you want, so it's not just how many parcels you got, it's how many frontages you have. Any examples spring to mind on multiple frontages?
Well, I mean, T, you know, I think, I think we talked, when we talked about it, we kind of agreed that it's thirty-two square feet, so either you somehow know that this is thirty-two, or mark out that dual frontage, so that any lot in aggregate conservation area is thirteen, whether it's two sides or three sides.
Yeah, I agree.
So, scratching, scratching, have the provided, however, on lots facing any one street, something could see, she permitted one side, so we're scratching that first one, and now we've got this other funny line, lots or parcels with solely residential use are not eligible for a sign that is otherwise permitted, okay, so, if you already, if you already have a, if it's being.
It's a one acre corner lot, and it's completely residential, you can't put a sign on it.
My only question about that is, is this referring, what if it's a residential lot that doesn't yet have a residential use, it doesn't have the house built? Then you can't say that it has solely a residential use, it's permitted as residential, so I'm trying to get a handle on whether this is trying to say you can either build a house on it, or you can build signs on it, you can't build both, or is this saying we don't want to have a sign on a residentially zoned property, in which case, why do we, why?
It says residential use, so the lot is vacant, it has no use.
Exactly, so.
If you build a house, then the sign has to come back.
If you build a house, the sign has to, what else?
Well, you're illegal, used in the, in the law system.
Forming a sign. Presume, presume, I guess you couldn't build a house if you had the sign.
Now, you can build a house, Gary, but then it becomes illegal, so when the, when the business states the sign has to come back, no more signs, I think, I think the probability here, Gary, is really small.
Well, probability of everything in Rappahannock County is small, but, you know, it's the, what the heck are we saying?
Yeah, that's a question, that's a.
So there's a comment to the side of that, paper, I have it pulled up on the screen, lots or parcels with solely residential use are not eligible, and I don't have any who can read that on the paper, we do not want to allow single-family residences to apply for air-seated permit to install a twenty-square-foot sign announcing their home, but must allow a church or other commercial business that has been duly permitted on a residentially zoned parcel to seek a sign permit for that use.
So this is, this is trying to get to the point that it's, you have a house on it, and you can't get a permit, but if you don't have the house on it.
Or if you have a church.
Well, if you have nothing, or if you have a church.
Or don't have a church.
Well, what do we think about that?
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's lovely the way to.
I'm not sure we need the last part, lots or permits with solely residential use are not eligible for a sign.
I agree, you can, yeah, that's right.
Because.
Otherwise, it's confusing.
Otherwise, like, what is that, what, that is otherwise permissible through this section, it's like, that's redundant and confusing.
So we're gonna, we're gonna end that permit.
So we're ending at a permit, lots or parcels with solely residential use are not eligible for a sign permit.
No, then we zip through the rest, we could be.
So with the chairman, can I make a motion that we continue to read the votes tonight, maybe for a few minutes, not for a.
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday night.
Yeah, it does look like we have, I was, thank you for reminding us of that, I do think we have a relatively light agenda on, on Wednesday, so, I appreciate that suggestion, Mr. Henry, do we want to, would you be okay if we took a few minutes just to, just to read through these briefly, and, and not really discuss that much, but think, prime ourselves to talk about these on, on Wednesday as well? So, and again, that's not track down the numbers, I think if you read the language, so they're saying we should have exemptions for all small signs that do not exceed two square feet, so, it's suggesting a kind of a, across-the-board micro sign shingle opening, so we should think about that. Recommend not identifying onsite business identification signs in a portion of this text, signs and agriculture and parcels is permissible. So this almost seems to be questioning the entire idea of our on-premise and off-premise if we're going to read it.
Well, and also, on that first point, a two-square-foot sign, I would say one two-square-foot sign. Wouldn't want to allow a series of two-square-foot signs.
You'll, you'll afford to.
I can picture, yeah.
Yeah, one, for each piece of firewood, uh, all small signs that do not, okay, well, let's think about that, exempting, not all, but, signs that do not exceed two square inches, maybe, or two square feet, let's consider that, but on the next one, I'm not sure I understand this, because they're referring to this, they seem to be questioning from the very outset this notion of onsite business versus off-premise, but maybe I'm not following that. Allowing signs and agriculture in the parcels with signs, item is permissible, thank you, they seem to agree that we can do what we're doing, county may also consider not exempting large signs, which would be the same as other permanent signs of commercial activity, and it's no sense to me, but we just keep thinking about it, line two forty-seven, recommend providing all signs per governmental and public agency, one group, and not specifying, provide in line two forty-seven. Okay, we've got to get back on to that.
We got, I know, period sign.
Uh, two seventy-five, recommend considering any conflict with line two forty-two, and the potential to combine and eliminate the specific scenario of a wayside stamp, I'm afraid these are a bit cryptic to get much from moving this way. Line four oh six, recommend removing the patient, all right, well, we'll have to track these down, I'm sorry, I thought these would be more self-explanatory, so we'll redo them, but, and then, theater signs to a changeable time, so they're going to neutral identification, all right, so, homework for Wednesday is trying to track these down, do we know what Ron references these on?
I was guaranteeing to say, I figured out, um, the printout copies I have before you, on Word docs, it's the sign article at the very last one, edits through PC media, it's a simple track changes.
Yeah.
That's what correlates with this broken memo.
So these are the ones under simple track changes.
Yeah.
All right, so, thank you for that, I believe we had a.
And that's the same version that we printed out for the night.
Remembering multiple people's versions of this, no, no, this is the one that I started to print in my print shop.
I second your notion.
Who is that?
Um, I think, well, I had said I could give another, I guess it's not on the agenda, so we'll, did we say we're going to give another comment here? Oh, okay, very, we're going to quickly open the comment period, unless, Mrs. Eaton, do you have any, thank you, I'm going to close the public comment, we had a motion duly made in second, all favor, I, thank you.